Good morning, good afternoon and good evening to all if you're on my side of the world right now. A very warm welcome to what is the second hospitable town hall of the year. We're going to do little things a little different today. You might have caught on with the in-app messages or the newsletter we sent. So it'll be a little bit different than what we've done in past town halls. Today, the meeting will have a focus, a specific theme and focus, which will be on payment processing. Yay! This is a new future feature that we're developing obviously for the hospitable direct booking website. So we want to hear from you. The usual Q and A session will be focused on your suggestions, any helpful insights on the feature that you may want. So this time, we'll be coming to you with questions and we'll be hoping to have your user experience and your input and expertise and insights on what you think needs to be considered. How can we make the feature as efficient and as useful for you? Just before we kick off, just a little reminder, as per usual, that town halls are recorded and made available afterwards on our YouTube channel. So if you're uncomfortable coming onstage in the audience, being part of the live discussion, you can always submit your questions through Slido. Just go to Slido, hashtag hospitable. I'm monitoring that form too, and I'll be able to pass on your questions to the live discussion here. I think that's it, and I can pass on to Pierre.
Yes.
Company updates.
I think I can start. Thank you. Good morning, everyone in the US. Good evening to people joining us from Europe like me. Very happy to have you for this second town hall. The agenda is pretty busy. And we're going to start with some great news in particular about people joining our team this week. We have Jack Hoop that is starting, that is unfortunately not on this panel right now, but you will have to go through the ritual of getting introduced to this panel in two weeks on the next panel. And I'm basically looking for Shifra, who is actually in the room. I hope that's the right one because you need to set up. So we've sent an invite to Shifra. Shifra is joining our team just this weekend. It would be fantastic to ever join our stage right now if she can. She's completely new to Clubhouse, I believe. Okay, that is fantastic. I'm inviting her. Okay, come on, please. Yes, Shifra, what are you doing today?
I got to work. Hi, guys. My name's Shifra, like you said. And I'm based in Dublin in Ireland, and I just joined last week to the customer support team. And so far, it's been great. I really enjoyed being working with such a helpful team and just learning about the product in a lot of depth, and it's really interesting to learn about.
And you started replying to customers today or yesterday, I think, already, right?
Yeah, today.
Today, today. That's your first day. So you're going to see Shifra replying to you. Shifra is running from our European team, and she will be joined very soon by another future colleague that will be joining us on the first of February, straight from booking.com, customer support team directly. His name is Ray Neer. I'm definitely not saying his name right. Ray will be joining us and will be joining our European customer support team. So again, that would be a new face joining us. Anything in particular to share, Shifra, about your experience of joining for the first weeks? Anything that surprised you in particular? Please come up with something. Should be you, Pierre.
I think what surprised me is all the really minute detailed features that are part of the website that I would never be able to think of and just learning about them and the process of making them has been really interesting and surprising.
Yes, there are plenty of those. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. So some other company, really high-level type of updates, and it's been quite busy for us in the business. So we have really been growing like a rocket ship for the current month of January, actually as a result of our clients, our customers' booking activity during the months of December. So we've passed together 5,000 customers. It was live on a panel December 29th for very much finishing the year 2021. I can share for now that we have passed $225,000 in monthly recurring revenue, and that is something that obviously will continue to fuel our ambition to be the best team and the best software for property owners and real estate investors in the industry. Was particularly spectacular, but this month is a growth rate at 9.5%. Now, this number may not mean much to some of you, but that's really a very spectacular growth, especially for that type of revenue bracket. In terms of benchmark, the top 25% of SaaS startup would probably grow at 4.4% on a monthly basis. So we are very happy about how this year is starting. And obviously, always, it's going to be about reinvesting into our team and into our product. Another update, again, very high-level on investments. If you have been following along, we have announced on last panel that we have raised $180,000. And again, great news. In the past weeks, our customers themselves have invested an additional $80,000 into hospitable. So our very warm thanks to Benjamin, Eric and Paul, who are joining Anresto's group. And a special thank in particular to Oger, who has decided to invest again on top of a previous investment. And we are actually, we're pretty stunned today. We have received our largest investment so far in just two hours. We didn't know what was happening. So a very special thanks to Julie. We completed our largest investment yet by sending $50,000 today. So it's still very early to be joining as an investor on hospitable. So you too can invest if you're a qualified investor in the US. But join us in case, just for the ride. You can join our investment portal on invest.hospitable.com. This is open to everyone for signing up, invest.hospitable.com. And if you are already an investor, you can also invest again. I'm sharing again, it's still early. Our communication regarding this fundraiser is very limited. To this panel, to a few LinkedIn posts, we want to ensure basically that our most engaged customers can get the first opportunity to invest into our company. And obviously, all the funds that basically were able to raise in that fashion are going straight to recruiting a best team and to build the best product for our industry. So why am I showing those numbers again? I just want to make sure that basically we're all aligned. Transparency is something that's very important to us, and we want to do more, not less in this regard. I want our users to understand the journey, our journey as a company, what it may mean for you, what it means for us. And that's basically ensure that we are on the same page. We really want to build a community around our industry, around our product, around our company. Some of you in this room are already investors into hospitable, or may consider becoming investors or joining a team. We have actually recruited people that were joining us on those panels in the past. And you may be interested in helping our company in any way to achieve your goals too. So the only thing that we wish is to make sure that our success can be translated to your success as much as possible. So if you're joining on the investment portal, in particular in the next few days, make sure you do, because I'm going to share also our gross projection numbers for 2022. And I know it's basically a cliche for a fast-started founder to be saying that, but we are really just getting started. And 2022 is going to be an amazing year for us. Matthew, anything that you want to share on the customers' front, on the customer's side of things, more practical and obviously better?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll start off, I was going to be sharing with you our NPS score regularly, just to kind of have an idea of, you can have an idea of what the rest of our hosts are thinking about our software. Right now, well, since the last time we met, two weeks ago, our NPS sits at a very healthy 66. So that essentially translates to, out of all the hosts that have given us a score over the past two weeks, the average rating is an 8.7 out of 10, so a very favorable score. Again, like I mentioned last time, something that we pay attention to. We're always striving to make sure that we're increasing that NPS. It's an easy way for our hosts to give us a quick vote of confidence, let us know what they think of the software, let us know when we're doing well, let us know what else we need to improve on. Another thing I want to talk about with our hosts, so I've been, through our app, you can schedule a call, an office hour, if you will, with myself, other members of the team. I encourage you to do so. Go ahead to our help center, click on that "Schedule a Call" button, and then take an office hour with Matthew. We take those extremely seriously. I had several this week where hosts gave us some great feedback. And right from that feedback, we're creating internal discussions, trying to see how we can enhance our process. What are some of the things that we can do better? We're doing our best, and we always know that there's something that we could do, that we could add to make things more efficient for our hosts. So again, we take that feedback seriously. And I did want to highlight a quick story here. When you work with a software provider, the vast majority of us out there, there are always going to be challenges. There are always going to be issues that come up. We're working with several other integration partners, right? We're building systems on top of systems. I had a call with a host. He's been having some challenges with the software. We got to a point where the discussion was, hey, I can't leave hospitable because I always know that even when there is an issue, I know that you're taking care of me. Whereas with other providers, it's sitting out in the cold for four days, not hearing a response. That's something that just doesn't sit well with me. So I know you're going to have some of those challenges, but I just appreciate the ability to have these conversations with you, to be able to jump on a call or to be able to jump on a live chat with a team. And I take a lot of pride in that, that our hosts can feel like they can reach out to us and that they're heard and that their issues are addressed. Moving on to some of the customer growth, Pierre shared some great revenue numbers. We're all super excited about that. And in correlation with that, this past week, we had the most new subscribers in a week that we've ever had in hospitable. So things are rolling along smoothly. Again, very, very excited about what's to come. So that brings me to my next point, some recruiting updates. I'm still on the hunt for a sales rep on my team. Any of you located in the Americas or anybody who knows a good, interesting candidate, don't hesitate to send them off to our angel.co site. We'd be happy to take a look at those applications. I actually had a few hospitable customers, hospitable hosts that I'm going to be interviewing here in a couple of days as well. So really excited for that. Along with that, we're still on the hunt for a CS engineer, looking for somebody with a bit more of a technical background, but still likes to sit in front of our hosts to be able to have those conversations, to dive deeper into some of their issues. So we're looking for somebody ideally within the European time zones. But for our customer support engineer, that's another position that we're still on the lookout for right now when it comes to the operations side. What we're hearing from our hosts, so this is something Vera, hey Vera, if you're on the call, how are you? Love you, Vera. Vera's been sharing with us that she's hearing more and more about hosts who aren't utilizing Airbnb and Verbo, who aren't utilizing those major channels that are really interested in using our software. Now, we know there's always been companies that have existed long before Airbnb, but recently, we have seen a bigger push for people who aren't using those channels, who are solely on the direct path, getting their hosts in the variety of ways that they get them now. And then the other thing that's been a hot topic, which is pretty exciting, smart locks. I feel like every other conversation that comes through live chat, somebody's talking about smart locks. We're very fortunate, about 50% of those are about Schleg, and I know that that Schleg integration is live and kicking right now. And then I think we're seeing a nice increase because of the direct booking progress that we've made. I've been speaking to hosts for over a year now who are looking for that direct booking site and seeing the progress that's coming along with it. We're definitely seeing an influx of leads who are having those discussions with us. The other part of that, the other thing to mention is that we still do have that GoFundMe active for our teammates down in the Philippines to help them, to help their community rebuild. So if you check any of our social channels, LinkedIn, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, you should be able to go ahead and locate that GoFundMe. As Pierre mentioned last time, we're going to match the first 5,000. So please consider donating so that we can go ahead and provide some relief and help out in any way that we can to those folks down in the Philippines. On the customer side, it's been a great week. I had a lot of calls with hosts. It's really great to be able to discuss our product. And yeah, that's about it from me. Thanks so much, Pierre.
Sorry for that. I was looking for basically a way to copy the link to the GoFundMe, but maybe something that Matthew, you can do so basically people can actually donate by having that. So I'm going to share a few product updates about what's being released. Obviously, smart locks, Schleg on code. That is something that was open yesterday, and we're going to start marketing it more aggressively in the coming days to our user base. So thank you very much to 49 people that have helped us test our Schleg integration in the past month. We are taking an integration like this one very seriously and wanted to make sure that everything could be validated to our high enough level. That's the reason why I wanted to make sure that everything was working as expected and give us the opportunity to be safe about, to feel safe about this release. So we have updated, adapted our product, including today just slightly, to ensure that everything will be working as expected. You can connect today to your Schleg accounts, and we'll be importing your Schleg on code, your Schleg on code devices and expecting codes for all, expecting all codes for your future guests to be created almost immediately. We're going to keep improving, obviously, on our product. Obviously, the first thing is about the increasing the number of integration, but it's on a roadmap for the future and really working with two engineers working on that is really building an integration with RemoteLock. And I believe Matthew had a kickoff call with the RemoteLock team and our engineering team on that already today. So this is really very, very, very high on the roadmap. The other part is lead listings. So that is something that may be a bit more obscure. That's something of particular interest to you. If you have, let's say, multiple Airbnb listings for the same property, maybe across different accounts. We're not talking about coasting here. This is something that actually will be key for direct booking, payment processing as well, defining fees. I'm just, I think that's basically, this is something that will be highlighted in the product at this point in time, and it is made to facilitate basically the reconciliation of data for across different channels. You can read more about that on our changelog, that is on changelog.hospitable.com, and you can see what impact this is having on the particular way we want to build direct and payment processing. So that's it for me for now. Angela, on the payment processing piece.
Thank you so much. So as I mentioned at the start of the meeting, this portion of our town hall will focus primarily on payment processing, on the hospitable direct booking. We want to hear from you. We want to get your perspective on what you want to see from us so that we can build a better product. So we'll be prodding and poking you this time to get your input, your user experience or any insights that you want to share with us on how we can make this feature better. I'd like to invite some hosts that would be willing to be onstage and have this discussion. But before I open the floor, call me a city dud, but I actually wanted to ask Pierre, what is payment processing? What is it that you guys are working on? Can you give us a bit of an overview and a setting of the scene, if you will?
Yes, I wish pleasure.
Pleasure.
I think that is a bit of a big one. Thank you very much. Okay, or maybe that's for me? I don't know. What's happening? Okay, so yeah, payment processing, so that basically we're talking about the payment experience. Okay, I've been inviting a few people on stage, so yeah, make sure that you're muted. Thank you. For this plate, we're going to make it very collaborative later. So payment processing is everything that has to do with basically the payment experience on the guest side. So ensuring what we want to have here on our case is really the high performing, the most convenient payment experience for your guest because that translates into more reservations. And that's also the other part. Actually, I find two parts that are basically a bit under the hood, and that's really, first of all, the payouts. So we want to obviously have the fastest payouts for hosts. I think that's really what is the key added value here. You want to receive your money as fast as possible, and we need to basically understand a few things about that. And I think the third part is allowing you to process those reservations in your sleep. So basically not having to consider doing any extra work through direct bookings compared to others. So those are really what we were trying to achieve through payment processing, the most convenient payment experience for your guests, the fastest payouts for our hosts, and allow you to process those reservations in your sleep without any kind of extra work. Now, we do have many questions on our side as well, so that's why I want to basically make that as collaborative as possible. I've invited a few people to join us, and I would love if other people that are interested, that have views on payment processing, that want to share maybe their experience because they have a direct booking website, because they have an issue with payment processing, they have used maybe a security deposit. Do you want to have a security deposit? Do you aid them? I think there are basically different views on that. So if that's the case, please go ahead. Please raise your hand. It will basically be inviting you on stage. I've already invited John, and I believe Angela, someone has invited Andy. That's great. That's perfect. How are you doing, John and Andy today?
Good, and I threatened that I would not be able to join today, but my schedule changed, so I can join for a little bit.
And thank you so much for joining us. That's fantastic.
I look forward to the town hall every two weeks. So payment processing, I used to use YourPorter, which is now a guest for hosts. And I think their payment processing was actually really spot on. And essentially, they were able to let you decide what percentage gets charged immediately. And then Stripe would process that. And then when you have the second or third payment down the road, so you could, I as a host could make that determination. And then that would all happen automatically. And then the other thing that was really powerful was it would hold a security deposit on that payment one day before check-in. And then let's say it's a 14-day booking, it would keep reauthorizing that hold until they checked out and then release it, I think it was seven or 14 days after they checked out. And that all happened automatically, so we didn't have to log into Stripe or anything to make that happen. So I think that would be a really, really powerful thing that, that's what I've come to expect.
Okay.
And then the other one aspect, that may or may not be relevant for many hosts, but oftentimes, depending on which owner that you're working with, you might have to have different routing, different Stripe accounts or different bank accounts that it needs to be charged to. So rather than just creating one Stripe link so that it all has to go to one account, creating the ability to map a Stripe account to different properties, I think would, from the get-go, provide flexibility, especially for trust accounting and things of that nature that a lot of folks in our industry do not take seriously. And I think building that in will help people at least move towards that direction. So those are the two top comments that I would have on payment processing. And then the third one, which is probably a reach ask, is I know Stripe is the industry standard for online payments, but there are lots of other providers. I think Elevon is one from, that you can get through Costco and whatnot, where the rates are much, much more attractive than what Stripe provides. And I wonder if there are any other options that you guys can look at as a payment processing partner, but that might be too much of an ask. And so with those three points, I'll mute my mic.
No, don't, please don't, not for this one. I'm sure you will have plenty, some input for later conversation. The point is to actually make that more collaborative. So that's not for me to answer, but thank you, Matthew, for noting that down. Matthew, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, John, I had a question for you there. So when it comes to breaking down the payments, I mean, is that something that you would do with every reservation, where you're paying a little bit here, a little bit there? Tell me a bit more about that. Were you breaking it down into two payments? Were you asking hosts and guests asking you maybe to break it down into more? Because obviously, we can get crazy complex with this, but just based on your experience, if you don't mind sharing, what's that process look like for you?
Yeah, I think even Airbnb does this. Most guests have a hesitation about paying the full amount, especially if they're booking, let's say, three, four months in advance.
Absolutely.
Paying the full amount. And so being able to say, I'm going to take two separate payments or three separate payments, I think that's, two to three is reasonable. I think if you start getting more than that, then it gets out of hand. And essentially, all it's doing is it's making a partial, it's taking a partial payment at the time of reservation so that the guest has some skin in the game, and they can't just walk away. They're going to have to go through some refund process if they want to cancel. And then, so my rule was at time of booking, 40% is charged. And then I believe it was 45 days before arrival, the remainder would get charged.
Okay.
And that just helped to, but I could always change that percentage, right? It was my decision if it was going to be 10%, 20%, 50%, 76%, whatever it may be. But that was kind of a toggle that I had. It helps me to kind of make a set of policies, and I might align it with what Airbnb does, so that everything's consistent, or I might make it completely different. But really, I mean, I have to say, YourPorter had a lot of things right, and the payment processing was one of the things that they had right.
And let me ask you, when it comes to the payout amounts, right, and things to that effect, like Airbnb, you're connecting that owner's got his bank account connected so that the payments are going through there, and then you're invoicing afterwards. Was that something that you were doing? Were you doing something similar? Were you kind of taking your payment and then processing the rest over to them? Like, what did that look like for you? Were you just a full payout, or were you giving like percentages of payouts and splitting up into different accounts?
Okay, I misunderstood your question. So all I was doing is, the way I have it, and I don't have hundreds and hundreds of properties, so it's manageable. For me, each client has a separate bank account that I direct all the payments to. And that way, I'm not commingling funds between clients and with my operations and everything. And so that's why each client had a separate Stripe, it's the same Stripe login account, and you can just create multiple, multiple businesses or things under it. And so I would just connect it separately to different bank accounts.
Great, yeah, they just have the payout go there directly. No, that, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I didn't know if you were then invoicing it afterwards, or you were saying, hey, here's the reservation minus my fees or any of those expenses there. But no, that's fantastic, man. I appreciate that, John. Thanks so much for the feedback and kind of walking us through your process. Wholeheartedly appreciated.
I do, I do a follow-up, John, if you don't mind. What is exactly your, and I know you basically may know that number on top of your head, but do you know what is your average reservation amount? Because you were talking about guests having reluctance to basically paying that upfront. Can you share maybe a bracket?
Yeah, no, my typical reservation amount would be around somewhere between $2,000 to $6,000 is kind of typical.
So that definitely is a different amount. So I think for us, the average amount of reservation that we're seeing across the way is about $1,200. And I think definitely there are different question that goes with the higher amount simply in terms of being able to charge an amount that's maybe larger than that. But that's maybe my naive view.
One thing I'll say in response to that is a lot of people are kind of, I wouldn't say pivoting, but focusing on what people are calling the luxury market. And so I think, I wouldn't preclude that taking your average to make, I would say this is kind of a foundational decision, and creating that flexibility could be helpful for even bigger hosts who may be in the luxury market, who might bring on hospitable, just, again, just for the communication part, which a lot of people do.
John, what do you think about buy now, pay later, where actually your guest will be paying maybe an installment but through a third party, and actually you would be receiving the cash upfront, 100% of it? What do you think about that? It will come at higher fees. So basically, there are multiple service providers now that basically offer buy now, pay later, where actually, in exchange of maybe your higher processing fee, you would actually, the guests would be paying themselves into different installment, but to that, we pay back that third party, while you, the host, would be paid upfront first for the entire amount. What do you think about that?
Me personally, I've never been about getting paid right upfront. So even Airbnb has options where you pay a little extra fee and you get the payment immediately. For me, it just eats into my bottom line, and so that's something that I haven't found too attractive. But I'm sure a lot of other folks, for cash flow purposes, for business growth purposes, maybe that does make a lot of sense.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Can you stay here with us, John, for a bit?
Yeah, I'll stay on the stage. If I have to hop off, I'll just hop off, but thank you.
Okay. If you want to intervene, please go ahead. Let's go.
Andy, Sporty Lauren, anybody? Want to feed off perhaps?
Andy.
Or you have other questions?
Yeah, hey, how's it going?
Fantastic.
Hey, Andy.
Good. I will literally, so John pretty much just said everything that I would say as well. Multiple, having properties tied to different Stripe accounts, being able to set payment breakouts, like some sort of percentage upfront, and then the final remainder at some other point later on down the road as they get closer to check-in. Deposits, breaking out fees, taxes as well, and making sure that we can put in specific taxes in case like Avalara or whatever you guys are going to use doesn't necessarily have that. So that's pretty much it.
So I want to ask a question that you don't have, John, but... So I, I want to ask a question that you don't have, John, but um, how does it work about, uh, about cancellation policies, for example? The, is that something that has been crossing your mind as well?
Uh, yeah, we have a, you know, we have a thirty day cancellation policy. Um, so typically our initial deposit, um, or the initial fee that the initial amount that they're paying. If they cancel within that thirty days and they can get their money, all that money back and we would just do a refund through Stripe or whatever at that point. Um, and so then we set our next payment uh, to be inside of that thirty day window. So then at that point, they're, they're committed and if they don't go through with that payment, then, you know, we just keep the money and. And reopen the spot up and, and get someone else in there.
And uh, John was sharing something about basically Stripe not being necessarily optimal or basically looking into others. Is that, has that been your experience so far too?
We mostly have stuck with Stripe, although I completely forgot that Costco does have a payment processing. And now I need to start looking at that because their rates are much more, like at least a percentage point lower than Stripes, so. Um, there's some really good stuff with that. Um, I don't know how like their APIs or their gateway stuff works with it. So that would be interesting to figure out, but. Um, so it's definitely, you know, the more cost savings we can do, the better. We've looked at another site out there that does direct booking. But, and they can integrate with Stripe, but they charge an additional percent on top of it. And so that kind of gave us a little bit of a sour taste in my mouth uh, as well, so. Um. Yeah.
So for, for you, basically the article, the, the brave and processing is about the fees, right? Uh, you, you've never had an objection in particular about Stripe customer support, service, any issue or problems?
Yeah, it's been, um, yeah, Stripe's been fantastic. The invoicing side is really. Really easy for us to send out an invoice quickly and easily to, to folks and then I just create another invoice for them to pay. Um, you know, three weeks prior to them staying, so. It just works out really, really well. I just have to do a little bit of math, but it's not, you know, twenty-five, seventy-five percent, it's not too hard to deal with.
Okay, yeah, fine, thank you. Uh. We, okay, anything else that you want to share, like anything that you would expect in relation with payment processing, payment processing?
Uh, no, that's all the notes that I had, so John, thanks so much for, for picking on all that. Captured every one of my points, so it was great.
Uh, okay, I'm just gonna ask a little bit of a housekeeping thing. James, thank you for joining us. Can I maybe ask you to, yeah, okay, I'm, I was able to mute you, sorry, James. I, I've been able to do that for you. Um, okay, maybe Sporty was the third one that joined us?
Yeah, Sporty. How you doing?
Sporty, that's a great name. Will. Fantastic. Uh, what's, what are your thoughts about payment processing? What can we do to make it convenient, fast? For us and uh, super easy for you to get those direct booking reservations? Oh no. Sporty just, Sporty, are you, Will, are you still with us? I think, I think he had a phone call. Uh, that's the perfect timing, that works amazing.
Is that what that was? It tells you when you're getting calls here? Wow, man.
Lauren, I think was next, Lauren?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, Lauren.
In here, how are you doing?
Good, I'm kind of nervous. This is my first time I've ever used Clubhouse, so here we go.
You're doing great so far, way to go.
It's going fine.
Great so far. I unmuted myself when it was supposed to, there you go. Um, so something that I wanted to add, I am very much like John, uh, I'm also recently come from Gessi for hosts. Um, and uh, something that's been missed though, I think is, um, or not mentioned, I guess, is. Um, the payment processor in connection to the booking widget and the direct. I mean, I know this is all about direct booking and things like that, but um, I have sent a lot of messages to support. You guys are probably tired of hearing from me now, um, but, but I'm trying, I mean. Basically what I've been told by some support is, oh, you wanna integrate. Um, hospitable into your direct booking site, no problem, we have a direct booking widget and you can just pop that in. But that widget is, is basically useless without payment processing. All it does is allow someone to like request it and you still have to pay out of band as far as I understand it. Um, so I'm just gonna throw that out there, that, that. It, it's being pushed to me, like it's a feature that's actually usable. And personally for me right now, I don't actually feel like it is without that payment processor thing. So I was looking into, well, can I integrate, you know, iCal and do a direct booking site completely separate from hospitable? And just have the iCal links for the calendars syncing, but you guys don't do iCal either. So right now for me, the direct booking site is, is really very painful trying to integrate with hospitable. Cause I don't feel like, I mean, it's just not there yet.
Yeah, and with um, with iCal as well, like we do have that iCal available that you may be able to attach to at least show the availability. Uh, what is available? The iCal won't push pricing though, so it's not there. Uh, and we definitely hear you. We're, we're not.
Can you import an iCal link though?
Into our site. Oh, we can export the iCal so that you would have the availability, but when it comes to adding reservations. You would need to manually.
It'd have to go both ways, cause if I get a booking, right, it would need to, to sync into the system too.
Absolutely. The, the iCal wasn't built for that by any means. Um, when you were talking about the direct booking site, like I thought you just wanted the ability. Or part of it was to show that, but no, we, I mean, we completely agree with you, like that. There's still a lot more to go when it comes to that direct booking widget. Um, and you know, that's the reason why we're all sitting up here today. The next part that we are working on is the payment processing. So we can be sure that we're delivering something that's exactly in line with what you are all expecting. Um, so yeah, definitely a work in progress. Same with the direct booking website, like you still can't process those payments. But we're taking those baby steps to get it to the point where we can do it all and do it all for you while you sleep, right?
I know.
Yeah.
If I, if I may, I, I want to be very clear to you, Lauren, we have no expectation of that to basically be usable. Uh, in for the usage that you're contemplating. What we want to achieve and it's very important to us is basically building in public. And that doesn't mean that basically doing a big race and releasing all of a sudden that all our assumptions about payment processing, about the websites. Basically were completely wrong at the beginning. So that's why we basically have been exchanging conversations. And for example, the direct booking widget that you're basically referring to, that's something that was shared, that was built in half an afternoon. To uh, to basically get the word out there and start seeing what kind of feedback would we receive on that. If the feedback is basically, this never works, that's a bug that we can fix and it's better to fix it earlier rather than later when it's used by more people. When we're gonna have payment processing, we're gonna have, we, this is basically building up, there are already users that basically can take those requests to book. And can basically ma- manage those payments in a different way outside of the service that we offer. We know there's plenty for us to build. The thing is really, we want to associate you with it. So that actually we have a shot at fitting in your requirements. We're talking that you have been using another properties or another property management software, that's amazing, there are plenty around there. There was something in there that basically helped you as a property manager, there's probably also something if we're having this conversation. That was not working for you. So here, you have a shot at helping us define exactly what's expected. I can share with you an anecdote directly about payment processing. We could never have figured out in a million years. That there was an actual expectation to connect Stripe accounts for properties. And that's, that's came, that came and that was surface and that shocked us and that's really was super important to us to hear that feedback.
Yeah, that, that is very important for sure.
So, take it as a fun opportunity and join the ride. It's definitely gonna be plenty of bugs and issues on the way and that's, that's software for you.
Oh, for sure, for sure, yeah, no, I, I get that. Um, another feature that I wanted to share that would be helpful for me and I'm not gonna tell you like how this needs to happen, cause I'm, I'm not a tough person, but. Um, so the structure of my business is, um, I'm a property manager, so I, I manage on behalf of the owners. Um, and um, the payments actually all go into my account and then I, I pay them out, so. Um, based on the management percentages, so definitely some reporting that keeps track of management percentages would be very helpful. But um, an issue that I'm running into right now that I don't currently have an answer for is a lot of my clients. Want to start doing their own, um, like website or just, um. Marketing and things like that, but they still wanna integrate with me. They still want me to do, you know, handle all the booking and, and deal with the guests and things like that. They're just trying to kind of generate their own name, I guess. So my thought was if, you know, if there's somewhere where we can integrate that direct booking site and the payments and everything. Through something like that booking widget, but obviously a lot more fleshed out. Um, so that I can just say, here, here's the booking widget, plug it into your website and everything else, you know, will go through me. Um, but I, but that, you know, again, I don't, I'm not telling you how to do your job, but that would be great if there, there could be some way to. Um, actually make that possible, basically to integrate with other like WordPress sites as well.
Yes, and I, I think that's really uh, has been the, the, the hypothesis around this booking widgets. Which I think is relatively unique in our, in our industry, so that's why we wanted to test it out relatively, relatively earlier. Um, and yeah, I think for us, the idea is basically you can. Uh, you can share the widgets, so as a link or as a basically a bit of code that can be integrated. Uh, within any kind of a website. Uh, it would load the calendar and would allow you to start the booking process. The idea is that once we are releasing more features on that direct, on that booking widget, basically they're gonna be there already. Uh, so there won't be any extra work needed uh, for that integration. So I. Something in particular, I mean, I'm not sure, um, is there something in particular that you need us to do differently, except you know, finishing the payment processing piece?
I mean, no, yeah, pay, well, well, like I said, um, well, reporting, which I view is kind of tied to. It's not the same as payment processing, but it's very integrated. I need to be able to break out, um, payments based on management percentage. And yeah, just actually having a payment processor, Stripe is fine for me, that's what I use for the most part.
So we already have a second feature request after payment processing breakdown and owner statement. Which Matthew has been, uh, has been looking forward to have for, for, for quite some time, I have to say.
No way, I've never, I've never ever mentioned anything about payment, owner statements and things to that effect. No, thanks so much, Lauren, we appreciate it. Um, thanks for the, thanks for the feedback there.
Can we have? Can we have Sporty back?
Yeah, I was about to say. Sporty, if you can join us?
Be a sport and join us, please, Will. Okay, I, I think we've, we may have lost him, Sporty, I don't know if you're talking, but we unfortunately cannot hear you. Huh?
I don't, I don't know why you. Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Hey, we can hear you now. Hey, Will, okay.
Connection issue.
Yeah, I think it's cause I was playing it through my truck, uh, but thank you guys for having me. Um, so I know we, we addressed some of the issues. I know John and Andy had talked about it earlier.
Is, is there a problem in the connection? I don't know if that's just me or someone else, I, I.
I was just asking.
Okay, I was doing the exact same thing, I'm sorry. It seems like we're having a bit of a trouble, problem with Will. I was like, oh man, my Portuguese internet's acting up again.
Maybe lost Sporty again. Maybe we can just move on to Evans, I think it was Evans next.
Yeah, Will, if you can hear us, drop me an email, Matthew@hospitable.
Huh?
I was gonna say, we, we keep losing you here. Feel free to shoot us an email, Matthew@hospitable with any of that feedback and I'd love to, uh, to take it to the team.
Yeah, absolutely. Another thing too is, um, on, on the. Is there a way we can upgrade to be able to add links and, you know. Bold writing and stuff like that to the description, that's one thing, uh, another question I wanted to know if we can. Get solved, cause we do mad, like three D tours of our properties as well. So right now I can't. You know, Airbnb doesn't really allow you to have external links, so being able to showcase that on our direct site would be great, you know? So, anyway.
That's about, that's about maybe updating, if I understood correctly, you would like to add some links, some external links.
Yeah, you know.
On your direct booking websites?
Correct, like.
With guests?
Correct, that was, I, you know, cause like I said, we do, I don't know if you know, Matt, the Matterport three D tours. So our guests can basically do a walkthrough of our properties prior to even booking, like, you know, like they're almost actually there, so. I, it'd be great to, but I can't link it through like Airbnb, I, I, so when someone, I always send them like. A link, you know, afterwards. So right now I actually have my auto responder set up to send them. A link through hospitable, like, hey, more in detail stuff about the property, then check it out, but.
Okay.
The uh, since we're offering the direct, you know, since the direct booking site is now. If you, if you put a editing software on the, on the different. Uh, the different, you know, paragraphs that are available to be edited, that would kind of just solve that problem. And that might just be a, it, probably a simple piece of code or third party code.
I'm sorry, we, 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 so sorry, I, I, I got, we got, we got exactly what you're saying. Uh, I just think that basically there is maybe some connection problem. Um, but what you wanted basically was a Matterport integration, which is basically this fantastic device that allows you to kind of map. Do a three D picture of, of a visit. I, I don't think the answer is really about the link from our side. I think what would be really the convenience experience is actually for your, for your guests is really be to have that integration. So that they can perform the visits themselves if we are able to have Matterport. That's, that's basically not something that is on our roadmap right now, because we want to talk about payment processing and we really want to satisfy Lauren and make it happen. For uh, for any kind of upgrade to the website in that regard, that's something fantastic. I would love to make it happen, but that's something that we're gonna need to push a little bit later.
Uh, it's, it's okay, I don't, I think you're just, I'm breaking up so you can't hear me fully. I, I didn't say I wanted to. Implement Matterport, I was just giving you an example of some of the stuff that we do, but it's, it's okay. The main thing is you have the ability to be able to separate the payments. You know, that's, but Andy and John talked about that. I just brought up the other issue as far as. If we can have the ability to make more edits inside on the actual, the. The aesthetic look of the website, that's all I was asking.
And that's perfect, and that's really when I understood. For us on our side, really the job is getting to the point of the first reservation that's entirely played through. After that, it's gonna be multiple angles and we completely hear the feedback as well on the, on the templates, on the design and the features. And I think we can have on those sites. This is gonna be coming in very obvious way. Uh, that's basically demands multiple uh, areas of work as you can, as you can appreciate. So thank you very much, Will, for, for that feedback. And I know this is something that's already being acted upon in relation with the, with template designing in, in this regard.
Awesome, awesome, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, we have.
Evans, you able to join us? Hi there.
Yes, hi, thank you for having me on stage. Um, my question, I've been really looking forward to, um. Uh, uh, the direct uh, feature and my question is when are you planning to make the payment live? Uh, do you know like a, like a year, six months? I, I'm really excited to. So can I use that?
Shorter than six months, shorter than six months, but more importantly, we want to, we want to hear about you, so we want you to answer our questions really. What has been your, have you, do you process payment, uh, direct bookings already, Evans?
I do not, um, I do not because I simply haven't had the time to invest in finding ways to do that. Um, and, and trying to, you know, set calendars manually, uh, with guests is just a hassle, so. Um, I like that this is integrated with, um, uh, the calendar already. So if, if that's set up, then the guest could just, I could just send them the link. Um, like repeat customers, for example, who, you know, who, who would like to, to book directly. Can just get the link, um, and book directly and then it integrates directly with, um.
Yeah.
You know, the other platforms.
Si- since you're, since you're completely new, do you have any kind of, and not yet, uh, on, on direct booking website? Is there anything that, you know, you want to look at in particular that may be. An objection, something that you believe may cause a problem in basically setting up a direct booking websites? Uh, so that basically we know exactly what is, what may be on your mind then?
Um, not particularly.
So if basically we asked you to set up a Stripe account and you do it, that's, that's the experience that you prefer? Or would you prefer, you know, rather just giving the bank details and basically hospitable pays you directly? Without having to deal with anything in relation with payments? Is that something that is more likely to be exciting you? Or more likely to be, you are completely irrelevant?
That, that's what I'm looking for. Uh, I don't want to have to, to deal with Stripe, uh, individually, like I would rather just put in like. Their bank routing number and account number, um, and automatically have. Everything else done in the backend so that I could just receive the payments. Um.
I think it's unlikely though, if we're talking about guests, for the majority of guests to be willing to put in their bank, banking information. So I think there has to be some way to accept credit cards.
I think for, for Evans, it was really about.
Right.
Sorry, Evans, go ahead.
I, I'm talking about. I, I'm talking about in terms of receiving payout. So it's, so the guest on their side will put in their credit card information. And then it goes through, you know, whatever integration that Hospitable has. And then, then they can just.
Yeah, you don't even want to, you don't even want to worry about it. You just want to put in your bank account details and see that check from us, you know, every so often, right?
Exactly, keep it simple.
Fantastic, I love to hear it, Evans, thanks so much for sharing that.
So Lauren, you were, you were saying something here about basically putting in your, your, your banking, your, your account details and all. So you, you never add, so payment by credit card, obviously that's a given. What do you think about payment transfers, banking transfers, bank transfers directly? Like in the US, I know it's wire, the CH and all this funny vocabulary in the US, in Europe, Europe, a different way of doing things? You never accepted the bank transfer as a payment?
No, no, I mean, I would, I'm, I'm fine with that. And if that's an option, I think that's perfectly acceptable. I just, I know as a guest, whenever I have that option, I never choose that option. Because I don't know, that's, I, I, I'm okay with receiving it, but I won't do it. I'm just weird that way.
I think it's, I think it's an interesting, a cultural thing. Because like over in the States, I would never have done that. But then here in Portugal, everybody's like, yeah, just send me your bank information, I'll just transfer it directly. And I'm like, wait a second, like this doesn't seem right, but it's just like so widely accepted over here. So I find that very, very interesting.
Yeah, it very well may be cultural, because you asked me for my banking details. And I'm like, nope, unless you send me a secure portal link. And there's like a valid reason for you to get them, I'm not sending you my banking info.
I freaked out, I just had a contractor was like, here's my nib, here you go, just go ahead and make the transfer. And I was like, wait a second, I feel like this is private information, I shouldn't be holding on to this.
Yeah.
That's, that's really funny. So in the, in the US, yeah, there's something shocking is that literally you communicate your bank account details and you can be charged directly by any vendor, by anyone that has access to that information. Whereas in the EU, that's really, there is a process, there's a regulation in place. So that's not something that can happen like that.
And it is, I mean, it is like, like employees often get paid via, you know, direct banking transfer. I mean, it's something that, that is done. I have some of my clients who pay me that way too. But it's not common, and from a guest perspective, I wouldn't expect it to happen very often.
Okay. Crypto, payment via crypto? Anyone has any views on that? Anyone, anyone in your experience, so I don't know about John, I don't know about Lauren, if you had any experience with basically having guests that want to pay through crypto?
I don't want to accept crypto, I don't want to deal with that.
I will say, while I haven't, there are payment processors who do it to crypto. I think it would be, you know, pretty transformative, transformational if you guys could allow us to accept crypto. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I had a blip on my side. And thank you very much for that, John. Evans, you wanted to share something?
No, I said that, that's a really good idea. You know, if, if that's possible, of course.
You have any experience with crypto, Evans? Receiving funds with crypto?
No, I don't, I don't think I would.
John, did you, do you?
I would not want to, just because, you know, I have a volatility right now, up and down. You just can't count on it right now, but in the future, that's definitely something.
When they make, it's, it's one value, when they make the reservation, it's a completely different value by the time they check in. As long as we're on the upswing, I think we'd be okay, but who knows?
Right.
I, I personally have not accepted crypto. But I think the part about the, the financial transaction is, you know, obviously, that's what everyone's talking about. But again, down the road is getting our user agreement. When the payments are released, you know, cancellation policy all into the NFT and having the entire transaction so that it's, you know, within the, within the currency itself. That's the part I think is really exciting.
Stable currency.
Yeah, so anyway. Happy to talk about that with you, Pierre or Matthew separately, but I think that would be pretty amazing.
I, I think that's, so yeah, I, I don't want to give too much of an answer, but that's something that we communicated on in a previous panel, basically we are very interested in, in basically having, having facilitating payments via crypto without having to create any kind of constraint on the outside. But I think for us, the payouts, it's gonna be expected to be for a long time still with bank accounts. The, the thing is really facilitating the, the crypto payments, payments via crypto through stable coins. And so that basically there is a fixed amount, it's something that is particularly interesting as a use case, as a usage now for, for the travel and for the hospitality industry, because there are no chargebacks. Every transaction there is absolutely definitive and that basically bypasses the entire fraud, fraud system completely. So that's something that I think is, is something I'm curious about in particular.
What about PayPal?
We.
Have you guys talked about integrating with PayPal as well?
I think that's great. I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure about limitations, especially, you know, on the, on the old side. I'm, I'm not sure about, because that, that's basically would be, so if you want to connect your own PayPal account, that's something that I believe you would have to connect your own PayPal account. And basically considering the amounts that are in question here, you literally would be hitting a limit quite, quite far. What do you think about it, Lauren? You, you've had process reservations?
I, yeah, I, I mean, I accept PayPal, or I did accept PayPal on my previous booking site before I switched over to Hospitable and now I can't use that. But.
You can, you can, you just have pride.
It's, well, okay, it's a lot harder, but it's not integrated. It's, 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 it, that's a nice to have, that's definitely not a requirement. Like as long as there's a way to pay, which I assume Stripe and credit card is the easiest way to do that. You know, that can be version 2.0 or 3.0 or whatever. It's definitely not a requirement, though.
Okay, thank you for sharing that on PayPal.
Hey, let's, James has been up here patiently waiting. James, what have you have to add? What are some of the challenges that you have with payment processing? What do you want to share with us revolving around our payment processing?
Well, my biggest concern, thank you for having me and allowing me to speak. My biggest concern is since I've been doing this for a while, is I have ran into some situations, even with BRBO, as far as chargebacks are concerned, especially during the COVID situation. And I think that's the biggest struggle for hosts that, that provide a product that end up having a chargeback and the difficulty of winning a chargeback and all the information as an individual host would need to provide to Stripe or to whatever payment processor you may have to win that case. And the length of time that a person can do a chargeback is like 260 days or more. So I think the, what I would be interested in the most is protecting the payment plan that I accept. Because I provide the product, it's just after providing the product, is the person that, that purchased it gonna do a chargeback? Or is it gonna be some way to protect from being, having chargeback or fraudulent charges?
I, I'm trying to get something amazing happening, and that's something I may, I may regret. But I'm inviting Roy from Autohost, who is the CEO of Autohost, to, to be able to join us on stage now. He may have plenty of other things to be doing, but that's a very valid point about, about chargebacks. So yeah, thank you, Roy, for joining us, we're interrupting your busy meeting, your busy day. How are you doing, Roy?
Always a pleasure to join you guys and my esteemed colleague.
You, you had a question about fraud, chargebacks from guests in the travel, in the hospitality industry. Did you have anything to share about that, Roy?
It's basically something that unfortunately all of us are seeing more often now. Well, that, that's one of the reasons we set up Autohost to really help hosts and operators deal with this issue, among other things. That said, though, Autohost is mostly for usually bigger companies that need a lot of automation. And the way we help our customers avoid chargebacks is one, by verifying information formed on the reservation and comparing that to what we know about the person through their ID uploads, with their phone number, through their email. Our tools basically go and scour the web to find and understand context. And now what's the social activity of a person to determine if they're real? Not in order to profile them or understand their socioeconomic status. We really just care to understand if a person who paid online is also the same person who's walking through the door. Now, the best tricks for doing this manually is one, always make sure that the name on the credit card matches the name on the reservation. And if it doesn't, give the guest a call. If anything feels suspicious with the story of the guest, why they're coming, again, give them a call. This is usually the quickest way to understand what's going on. Now, this process will fail when you have 100 or more reservations per month. And that's where automation is key.
Hey, Roy, let me ask you something. Does, I know Autohost does a great job in compiling information for, for guests when it comes to like municipalities and providing. Is there anything there that Autohost can do to help with those chargeback places? Like is there any, you know, information that you're providing to the host that they could use? Because I know I've been filling out some chargeback forms lately. And, and James, you ain't lying, it's definitely a process that you have to go through. But I, I know with your tool and maybe some of the things that you're doing, is there something that can be utilized in that chargeback claim if we do get to that point?
Absolutely. So in, in the end, every security tool, whether it's cybersecurity or an anti-fraud system will eventually fail. No system is 100% secure, just a matter, just a fact. So Autohost, when it does happen, Autohost allows our customers to download reports so you can submit as evidence to Stripe or your payment processor or bank, which will basically include things like their IP addresses that they connected from, in order to check in online, fingerprints of their credit card. And what Stripe and the banks usually care about is to make sure that connections and activities are within close proximity of the billing address that they have on file. So that's one of the things we actually check before authorizing or automatically verifying reservations.
So I, I want to go back to James, if you, if you're still with us. If we're to integrate with, with Autohost to basically generate that data about, about your guests and doing obviously some opportunity for guest screening. And I want to say one step further is basically that it's us, Hospitable, that basically it's me to take the risk of any kind of chargeback. We can, we can build an experience about chargeback, but probably you will not be able to build it independently. What do you think about that? Is that something that would alleviate your fears of direct, having direct bookings?
Yes, that, that's what I was asking for. And, and I think that's, that's the most sustainable for, for a host is to have a situation to where, you know, if, if, if Hospitable is, 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 is doing the processing, then they should share any responsibility of making sure that the payment that's being received or accepted are genuine, uh, uh, patrons that are purchasing the product. Because from my experience through using different hosting sites or using Stripe personally, is, is, you know, they, they give you a certain timeframe. And if you're an individual operator, you got to try to meet the timeframe that hosts Stripe or some other processor is giving you to provide that information. And usually, the host doesn't have the preponderance of information that they really want or require. Because I require ID and I even provide the ID that came along with them even signing the paper, contracts saying that yes, I stayed and I wanted to stay and I enjoyed my stay. But that still didn't alleviate the chargeback circumstance that they happened after the fact. So it's just fighting the chargeback after everything's been done. You know, on the front end, defeating it on the front end is best. But it's fighting it after the fact, is that where the difficulty is.
Yeah, and that's been my biggest issue too. It's, it's not actual fraud, well, it's not a credit, a credit card being used by someone who doesn't own it. It's, it's a credit card being used validly by the owner. And they stay and they enjoy it, like James said, and then they leave and, and file a chargeback claim. And I've never won one of those claims yet, for a customer.
There doesn't one that I'm more about consumer disputes, right? Whether than actually fraud being alleged.
Yeah, you essentially have two main types of credit card fraud. And that's the criminal kind where people are using stolen credit cards. In order, usually the end result here is to create other types of crime on the premises for prostitution, selling drugs, selling illegal weapons and so on. And then you have friendly fraud, where just like you described, someone is using your services, but then calls their credit card company and claims otherwise. And those are actually more common. And the best way to avoid those is absolutely create a paper trail and documenting everything. And systems like Autohost in combination with Hospitable aim to create that automatically for you. So you can focus on the experience instead of creating the paperwork.
Yes, my situation is when you go with the personal websites and start taking direct bookings. And I'm trying to understand is Hospitable saying that they're gonna be the one to step in and process those payments and gonna be the one to deal with chargebacks if they occur. I prefer no chargebacks to ever occur. And, and I, I believe that when you use a, a, a site like Hospitable, any site that gives you the opportunity to have a relationship or conversation between you and the guest, it helps prove that the guest was there. And if you were send the guest the right type of messages and the guest responded, oh yeah, we're having a good time, we're really enjoying the place. Then you got proof that if they allegedly say after they leave, oh, it was a terrible place, you got proof that says, hey, here's our correspondents back and forth with each other during their stay. And that's not the representation that they gave us while they was there. So.
I think there are many pieces that go, especially with the friendly, friendly dispute part, that's really gonna be having consolation policy that's clearly documented, that's clearly agreed or read upon by, by the customer. But, but to be clear, I mean, obviously Roy and I go and join once in a while on a, on a Zoom call. And we have already announced basically for Hospitable, especially what we want is really to facilitate. I think again, most convenient experience for guests, faster payouts for hosts. And we believe that really what would alleviate a lot of tears about adoption of direct booking is gonna be for us as Hospitable to step in, be the one, being the merchant of record for those kind of transactions. So we take the risk ourselves about basically those kind of chargeback and fraud, but we are able to equip ourselves, especially with the entire frontend experience. So we have the entire control of the, of the website and the data that's being generated. And we integrate then with Autohost directly, not something that you even have to know about. But basically we'll offer you an opportunity to, to screen your guests with the ID, really understanding who your guests are gonna be like. And Roy's product, Autohost, has been absolutely amazing at that and facilitating, you know, escalating, you know, issues about a particular guest profile so that you can adapt your checking, you can, you can articulate something to alleviate any kind of risk that you, that you may have with, with a guest. And then basically facilitating the documentation for claims around, around chargeback. So that's something that we know, we, we have notified already as a, as a particular opportunity for, for a direct product. We already have Autohost integration, but that is indeed for, as Roy was saying, for more enterprise-like customers that can connect their Autohost account directly. And especially for, you know, integration with existing, existing channels. And Roy, we're gonna have plenty of bits to share with you in the coming, in the coming hours of days about, about the scope of our integration. I know that Toby on our side has been working quite a bit on the.
Maybe last, if I can share with the group here is that I, I learned this after speaking to a few credit card companies and Stripe. The way it works is the credit card company or the bank will always side with their customer if it's the first time they're filing chargeback claim, always, no matter what and how much evidence you have. However, if there's a pattern, then the evidence submitted will be accepted and you'll, as long as you have all the wrong information, you'll win those disputes. So just nature of the business, the banks will always prefer to go with.
So how do we win a dispute if it's the first of a pattern?
You don't, you don't. You don't, that, that's really is a experience, you can have all the documentation that you would like. It's basically doesn't work.
The great question is how, if this is a, a, one, somebody that has found this to be a system that works for them, you know, because the credit card company would not share how many times they, they created this, this scenario. So it, it's basically us hoping that once they do the research and say, well, this person did this more than once in the last six to 12 months. So how do, how do you as a host or find out that that part of the information that, you know, it might be a first for us, but is it a first for, for the, the credit card holder? So that, that's just one of the situations, I guess.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you, you don't know upfront, that's something that you're gonna have to, to discover. And if you have experience with chargebacks, you know that basically you never. You, you don't know upfront that's something that you're going to have to, to discover. And, uh, if you have experience with chargebacks, you know that basically you never give an explanation. Uh, so that's, that's, that's kind of the, the limits of the process, basically.
And that's why prevention is super important because, yeah, like exactly with the situation.
But hey, I'd like to ask you guys a question. Uh, what is your in-game on hospitable as far as what you're trying to create? Cause I think it's, it's absolutely fantastic to, to have the op- the opportunity to operate, uh, directly with guests and to build your brand directly with the guests, especially repeat guests, because, you know, they could have a great experience with you and a terrible experience with someone else. And people typically come back to places that they really had a great experience with. So it gives individual hosts the opportunity to really show themselves and all the ex- the costs that they put in to try to provide a great experience by having their own website and building their own brand. But i- is that like build a conglomerate with, with, uh, hospitable to, to, uh, kind of specifically help target those type of re- repeat guests?
So I, I think there, there are multiple layers, uh, to that, to that question, to that, to that question. What, what I want to tell you is basically our model in relation with direct booking is really about more about Shopify than Amazon. Uh, it's not about building our brand. It's allowing you to grow yours and facilitate everything on the, on the backend to build a network of, uh, of hosts, build a network of great guests, uh, with Roy's products and basically with your history that we have with them. So that you're not on your own when you, when you're taking and when you're taking direct booking, because so far that's really been the main objection and my, my main hesitation myself about basically processing direct bookings. Um, so that, that allows us to kind of facilitate. Our, our skin is the game is basically that, you know, we are going to be involved in the transaction. Uh, and that we'll see something that we can, we can leverage, but that will never be at the cost, at the cost of the host. So that basically what we want to achieve is really offering you through a direct booking. And if you want and you choose to do so, having an experience as simple as that of an OTA, as an Airbnb, as a verbal, as a, I want to say booking.com, but that's a bit different. So that, that really is a, is a, is a goal about that. And that's what may be interesting for, for the market and for, for the industry. Um, so Angela and Matthew are basically at one point, we need to stop, uh, this kind of thing. And I, 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 I'm going to ask Eli and, and Sean. Maybe if you have, if you have a particular observation about your workings, please go ahead and share. Uh, I think we're going to be on the, on the ending. Eli, you're, you're an investor into hospitable. What do, what do you like? Uh, did you like hearing anything about it?
Uh, yeah. Hi, everyone. I, uh, actually my ears really just kind of peeked up when you were talking about, uh, bank transfers. And I was just going to add that I don't think anyone in the U S is going to pay, uh, via bank transfer. Uh, I, 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 I think the main, uh, takeaway for me is that simple credit card transactions with Stripe and, you know, just getting regular payments on an ongoing basis, the way that Airbnb would pay out is really, i- is really what, what we're hoping for here. Uh, and yeah, also chargebacks sound terrible, so.
They are. They, yeah, absolutely.
Maybe from a security point of view, bank transfers are actually a responsibility of, um, the bank owner. So it's a, a big potential for fraud and scams. Uh, and once you send your bank transfer to another account, you're the one who's responsible. Where if you do it with a credit card, oftentimes you can go back to the credit card company and claim a fraudulent transaction and they'll cover you. There's a law in the USA and most Western countries where banks are required to ensure transactions to some level.
Right, right. That, I mean, that's, that's definitely, uh, true. I, I just think the thing is that there's, there's not going to be that many people who are going to actually want to pay via bank transfer. And to, just to offer it, I, 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 if I had an option, I wouldn't offer it. If I had an option to offer PayPal and that would involve me having to like sweep money out of my PayPal, uh, every once in a while, I would not offer that. I would, I would err on the side of going for the mo- the most simple solution. Uh, so as long as the money is just going into one place, then maybe I'd consider offering other things. I, I know you talked about buy now, pay later as well. I probably wouldn't offer that just because they're charging like six percent plus, I guess, thirty cents per transaction. And I don't think that that would really increase my, it's not, it's not like my occupancy rates are low and I need to increase them in some way. So I, I would just keep it as simple as possible.
What if it's an option on the guest? Because you have an objection about a fee, but basically that's not your cost. That basically going to be the guest that you want to have.
Okay. I mean, I guess that'd be fine. Yeah. If the, if the guest was going to pay that other fee. But I don't think that, I, I, I'm not even familiar with their terms of service, but like when I, if I go to buy something online and I have the offers for Affirm and Klarna and Shop Pay, Payin4, all that kind of stuff. There's never a fee assessed to me. So I, I don't even know if, if those processors even allow that under their terms.
That's, that's a good observation, actually. Thank you for that, Eli.
Hey, could I ask a question? The difference between a credit co-
Sorry, James. I'm, I'm good. I'm, I'm sorry. You sure, I'm sure you have plenty of questions.
Yes.
What I would direct you, I, I want to make sure that basically Sean also gets an opportunity to speak because he has been waiting for quite some time. We've been talking about chargebacks. And definitely, you know what? You can send me something on back channels, uh, to, to ask me anything. And we, this is something that we keep talking about and to be, to be quite clear, uh, on the, on the side. Uh, Sean, Sean, you've been waiting for, for quite some time. What, what are your thoughts? If you can share them?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, great. I use this, right? It's my first time trying out Clubhouse. Um, no, I, I raised my hand earlier when you were talking about, uh, accepting crypto payments. Um, and I, I think that, you know, initially on the direct booking website, uh, it might not really be a necessity to, to offer it, especially if it's going to take a long time for you guys to develop that and bring that, uh, to the market. However, I do think uh, it would, it would definitely be wise to, to look into it. I mean, if it's a simple solution to integrate it, uh, there are a ton of people that are starting to go towards the, uh, the crypto payments. Um, I would definitely be interested in accepting it. Um, and, uh, I, I don't know how many other people on the platform would. I mean, I know that right now credit cards seem to be kind of the, the main way that people pay today, uh, but if there's a way to kind of get on the forefront and, and be ahead of the game. Um, but I mean, again, there's also so many different types of cryptocurrencies out there. So which one do you use? Uh, it seems like Bitcoin is kind of the behemoth and then you've got, you know, Ethereum, kind of the up and coming. And then there's other ones like Solana where you can make payments to people and it's like a fraction of a second where you can get a payment, which is very uh, valuable to people, you know, on, on the platform that are accepting payments. If they can get an instant payment, especially like for somebody that books last minute and you want to make sure you have your money in your account. And you, you don't want to wait for the credit card payment processor to, you know, take a day or two with the concern of somebody maybe canceling their credit card payment or, or, uh, disputing the transaction. So I think crypto payments, I don't think there is a way that you can dispute those charges. So I think that that's
No, it's, uh, every, every transaction on crypto is basically final. So they, there may be a dispute on the chargeback if they're paying on the bank, uh, on the credit card, um, uh, directly. And but that's, that's something that basically is, is another separate matter. Uh, that's basically one, one of the things that I believe is an advantage. We talk a lot about chargebacks and that's actually kind of something that is expected in the, in the hospitality industry because it is really, uh, elevated rate. It is an industry that's known for its chargeback rate. And crypto definitely fixes this. Now, our, our view on this, definitely, I want to reassure everyone, we're going to process credit cards well before we have, we accept any kind of crypto. If that's even something that we want to prioritize at a, at a given point about payment methods. But what I find is, um, is to, to be the hypothesis here is really having payments through a blockchain that's fast and secure. Uh, so you were mentioning Solana, you can mention also Ethereum. We need to also have something that's going to be relatively, uh, cheap, uh, because there are fees and that has nonetheless associated transaction fees that are going to be associated with any kind of a transaction. And that's something that is pretty, that can get grow quite high. Uh, and I think definitely with, that's not going to be, that's going to be through stable coins. Uh, so that's USDC in particular, so that you can, uh, exchange, uh, tho- those funds basically on a dollar basis, not on, you know, a completely uh, a more volatile class, uh, class of assets. Um, because that, that really fits absolutely no usage scenario, uh, for, for host or users alike. They, they want to pay the, the right amount anyway.
Well, USDC definitely is a, a nice, you know, feature as well. All these people that have said they're concerned about uh, their customers wanting to put in their bank account information. Well, if they use USDC, they still get the dollar for dollar. You know, but they don't necessarily have to give out their, their banking information. So that, that actually might be worthwhile. You know, looking into sooner than some of the other cryptos.
That's, uh, that definitely is, is our idea there. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Uh, thank you everyone so much for, for joining. Uh, w- we have taken piles, pages of, of notes, uh, about it. Uh, so we took everyone's feedback really close to heart. So breaking down payments and taking percentages, so installments rather than payment upfront. Talk about holding a, uh, security deposit with a particular logic around that. I have to share that there is still basically something that I would like to debate at a later time about, you know, insurance versus security deposits. So reducing the friction on the, on the outside as much as possible. Uh, we talked about different routing, having payouts to, so payout to multiple accounts, connecting multiple Stripe accounts. Uh, that's the word that we've been, we've been using, uh, multiple Stripe accounts to, for different properties. So that basically is something separated and helps, for example, John, maybe probably also Lauren, on something like trust accounting for, for other clients. Uh, we talked about cancellation policy as well. Thank you so much for that. I think it was Andy who left us. Um, uh, having different websites for each owner, a way to integrate with those individual sites. That's something that was also shared with us. Crypto, a little bit, chargeback evidence reporting. There was a great conversation and thank you so much. Uh, Rory and James, and James for talking about that because basically it sparks quite a bit. And we talked this earlier about payment methods and bank transfers. In particular, about cultural, cultural differences. There are very different banking, banking systems, uh, in the world. Definitely. That's not the priority. I just think that, um, that's basically something, uh, something different to, to look at at a later stage. Uh, but thank you for so much for that feedback. Uh, we're going to basically circle back, uh, review things as to basically what's, uh, what's on us, uh, what's on us to build at this point. Angela, Matthew, how did that go for you?
Yeah, thank you all. I think the discussion was riveting. I've been fully engrossed. So thank you for today. Thanks to those to the stage, as Pierre said, we look forward to welcoming back everyone uh, to the next town hall, which will be on the ninth of February. We'll share obviously the specific theme closer to the date. Um, and thank you. I don't know if that's, if anyone, if Matthew, you want to add something, but I think we're, we can bid everyone adieu for now.
No, that's all. Ciao. Thank you all so very much. Hope, thanks for the email, giving us that other payment processor. And, and I'm off to supper. I got two little ones who are ready to climb all over me right now. And yes, our, our daughters, not dogs.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. And until the next time.
Thank you very much.
Ciao, ciao.
Evening, day, bye. Ciao, ciao.